We understand that many of you are here today to share your opinions regarding the wearing of masks, particularly by our students. Please know that neither the Board nor staff have the authority to change the current mask mandates from the California Department of Public Health or the Occupational Safety and Health Administration (OSHA) requirements. We will not be voting on anything having to do with masks as it's not in our purview. Support for our opposition to masks should be directed to those authorizing agencies.
Riverside County Public Health Department.
We need to conduct our meeting. At approximately 9:30 p.m., the Governing Board will determine which of the remaining agenda items can be considered and acted upon prior to 10 p.m. And may continue all other items on which additional time is required until a future meeting. All meetings are scheduled to end by 10 p.m.
It was moved by Member Schwartz and seconded by Member Skumowitz to approve settlement for case number MCC 1900175. Motion carried by a vote of 5 to 0. It was also moved by Member Schwartz and seconded by Member Skumowitz to approve the victim restitution settlement agreement as presented. The motion carried by a vote of 5 to 0.
The Governing Board welcomes public comments. This is the time for open session public comments. Public comments are allowed up to a maximum of three minutes per comment ordered received to a maximum total time of 30 minutes per item for comments on agenda items or non-agenda items. For consent, agenda item topics, a limit of three minutes total will be allowed from one speaker. Unless the item has been placed on the published agenda in accordance with the Brown Act, there shall be no action taken. No discussion will be made regarding personal issues in open session. All public comments are an important part of the Board meeting and are given careful consideration by the Governing Board. So I know we have quite a few. Some of them will be done now and others will be done on the agenda item. First up, we have Caitlin Jones. Hi Caitlin, you'll have 30 seconds. You'll have a 30-second warning.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry. You'll have a 30-second warning and Mr. Skumowitz will let you know.
Okay. I'm speaking on behalf of Steve Campos, a PE teacher. Hello, my name is Steve Campos. Stand here.
Reclaim your time, please.
Hello, my name is Steve Campos and I am speaking as an individual teacher and just sharing my experience as an employee. I would like to start by saying that we need to stop the politicization of education. This is doing great harm to our students and is dividing us as Americans as well as a community. When I returned to in-person instruction, I was so excited to see my sixth-grade teachers, whom I had never met in person, and also my seventh-grade students, whom I hadn't seen for over a year. Even though there was an eagerness and excitement for all of us who had decided to return to campus, I could see the impact or toll that the past year had taken upon our students. For many, it looked like the joy of life had been sucked out of them. They no longer had that joyful seventh-grade smile on their face or the energetic hop in their step. And even if they did have a smile on their face, I could not see it. As a PE teacher, I had only one day to see my students because they had in-person PE only once a week. As a PE staff, we made the decision to make sure students were getting 20 minutes of walking, jogging, or running the one day that we saw them. They had options on how to use those 20 minutes and we felt that this was a great opportunity for them to socialize and connect with their friends while having an opportunity to get some physical conditioning in at the same time. One of the sad things was that the students had to wear a mask outside and not being able to breathe the fresh air that the day had presented. Some of them wore them happily and without an issue while others asked if they could take them down. Then there were the ones who had them down and then would put them back up when they would walk by me like if they were doing something wrong or if I was going to get them in trouble. This was very sad to me and the toughest part of my day to deal with. I could see their dilemma with being compliant and following the rules, which I appreciated and saw as a sign of respect. But I could also see the struggle and the pain of wearing the mask was causing them in their eyes. Some of the best-conditioned students I had had expressed to me how difficult and uncomfortable it was for them to run with their mask on. As you can see, inside, I was torn to see this and yet I understood the fear factors and concerns some had and respected them. As we approach the opening of our next school year, I hope we are not having to work and live under the mandates that do not work for everyone. I know many have received the vaccine and many have built up antibodies from having been exposed to COVID and many are not vaccinated. I believe we as members of this community have enough information as parents, students, and TVUSD staff to make an informed decision of what we think is best for us as individuals and as a collective group. If people choose to wear a mask or shield, great. If people choose to not wear a mask, great. Our buildings are equipped with what we need to keep us safe. Our classrooms are stocked with masks, sanitation wipes, soaps, paper towels, and sprays to keep us all safe.
Thank you. Time's up.
Next, we have Julie Madzirasek. Am I getting better, I thought, Julie? Mr. Skumowitz will let you know when you're 30 seconds.
Cultural proficiency, diversity, equity, and inclusion, ethnic studies, or in the case of this school district, equity, access, and inclusion are all just different names for the same subject. Critical race theory. We've been told that CRT is not being taught in our schools, but yet it is. The purpose of educators is to objectively impart knowledge. Instead, TVUSD has contracted the services of organizations like the Howard Group, Generation Ready, and Epic Education, who clearly focus on one race. The district has spent thousands of dollars providing professional development and training to administrators and staff on CRT. It is time that you stop taking the term "social studies" so literally and go back to teaching factually-based history and civics. Several meetings ago, the TVEA representative talked about a video of a teacher from Temecula Valley that was recorded discussing white privilege and stated that teachers should be able to share their experiences to enhance the discussion. I disagree. Teachers should present facts and then moderate discussions, guide free thought without imparting bias. It is the job of parents to guide their children's moral and ethical compass, not the school. Hate is not natural. Hate is taught. By teaching CRT and its misguided agenda, you are teaching hate and that some are oppressors and others are victims. My skin is white, but I am mixed race and I am a person of color. I am a product of immigrant parents and I am first-generation U.S.-born. I am a veteran, I am a patriot, and I will never apologize for the color of my skin. But when you teach such vile ideologies that focus on the color of one's skin rather than the content of their character, you are teaching hate and division. There are anti-bullying policies in place, but when you teach CRT, you are doing nothing but creating a new generation of bullies. Tonight, you will vote on the Master Assembly Consultant List, which is number two on the consent calendar. On that list, there is an organization called Epic Education. Their name sounds harmless, but they are very much not. Their online resources include videos with subtitles such as "The Permanence of Racism" and "Whiteness as Property," among others. One of the opening quotes to the video "The Permanence of Racism" is, quote, "Racism is a permanent component of American life and racist hierarchical structures govern all political, economic, and social domains, including schools." That leaves very little doubt as to their bias. Leaders do not teach, leaders lead. They lead by example. Instead of teaching CRT, TVUSD should lead by example by ensuring there is equitable access and inclusion. Don't talk about it, do it. Don't teach tenants of division. Instead, teach the tenants of tolerance, unity, acceptance, and above all, kindness. Differences are what make this a great community. Differences should be embraced, not singled out. Do not spend another dollar on division and hate. Vote no to approve Epic Education on the Master Assembly List of Consultants.
Thank you.
Mike Johnson.
Where is the 30-second warning at?
I heard it, I just ignored it.
Mike Johnson.
Honesty, that was a good question.
I don't so much have a statement as much as I have questions. I'd like to know from each and every one of you, how many of you have students in the public school system here at TV? You don't have to answer it. Okay, think about it. The other thing I'd like to know is what is the science that you're using? What basis are you using in applying these mask mandates? I'd like to know that. I don't know if you can answer that now.
You guys can ask Dr. Loh.
That's it, that's all I want to know.
Because of the Brown Act, we're not allowed to respond back to you, I'm sorry. Wish we could many times, but we're not allowed to.
The other thing I'd like to say is my daughter will not be wearing a mask at Great Oak High School. And I'd like to know what the options are. And I'd like to think that while all these parents here are likely in the same position I am, that they're not going to be putting masks on their kids at school. And when you see that enrollment start to drop and the money starts to be sucked out of the school system, you're going to be singing a different tune.
Next up, we have Tim Thompson.
Well, hello, members of the Board. I want to thank you for practically nothing today. The way you've been handling yourself is a travesty to this entire community. I want to tell you that according to the Department of Health and Human Services, the COVID-19 virus has had an overall survivability rate of 99.8% globally, which increases to 99.97% for persons under the age of 70, on a par with the seasonal flu. If you don't understand this, you haven't been using that lump three feet above your rear end, okay? It's very simple. This is an attack on our culture, it's an attack on our children, it's an attack on our American way of life, and we will not put up with it. If you will not make a change, we will make a change with those seats that are right there because you won't be in them anymore. I'll tell you this, I've been doing this for much longer than just COVID. I am no stranger to what goes on in the public school system. I want to fight what's going on, not just with the masks, but what's going on with the sexual indoctrination of our children. I come to the school board meetings and what do you tell me? You tell me to go up to Sacramento because you don't have anything to do with this. Oh, we're just a school board, go to the state. So we go up to the state. I've done this dance so long. Go to the state where they tell us, oh, well, you know what, you have to go back to your local school board because they're the ones with the control. So we come back to you, we don't have any control. This is what you guys do, you point the fingers in opposite directions, nobody ever wants to take accountability. Those days are over with. Now, I'll tell you this. Here's what happened last time I was here. Steve Loner was the only man with a backbone that was here that day. He said, "I want us to at least have the conversation." Mr. Skumowitz, Mrs. Hinkson, and Mrs. Broach, all three of you are cowards and wouldn't even voice your opinion. You're cowards, and I'm not afraid to tell you. You're cowards and you need to be replaced, okay? You have a moment to redeem yourself, though. I don't am on your agenda today. You three especially need a vote to open the schools with no masks, no social distancing. This is enough, is enough, and you need to make the decision to do what's right, okay? And I heard you, Mrs. Broach, I heard you say, hey, listen, you know, we would voice our opinion, but we don't really think the state cares what we have to say, even though Superintendent said you should go let your voice be heard. So if you're telling us to go let our voice be heard to the state and you're saying the state doesn't even care what you have to say, do you see the hypocrisy of what's going on? Enough of the hypocrisy. You three better make a stand for these parents in this community, and if you don't, you're
Next, we have our consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted with one vote. There are no discussion of consent calendar items unless members of the Governing Board or staff request that a specific item be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I call for a motion in a second to approve by consent items 1 through 29 that were not pulled for separate action or tabled. Moved by Mr. Schwartz.
Second.
Second by Mr. Skumowitz. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Are we going with the public comment?
Motion carries 5 to 0.
Did you hear from Mrs. Loner?
I announced this before public comments started, that there's an additional time for public comments on the reopening of schools. And if your name wasn't called...
Yeah, you just moved along like you don't count. But I hear we got to do count.
The remainder of the 30 minutes should happen now.
Why are we at max capacity in this room? How many people are allowed in here? Why isn't everyone? Max capacity right now.
Where is the... Where is the... Where's the syringe that is lit fire? Where is it?
No, not right now. Did you get a vote from Loner? I didn't hear his vote. Okay.
Exactly.
Okay, continue on. Next up, our information report.
Two out, two in.
Sorry.
Why do you...
Oh, yeah, okay, thank you.
We've got a lot of money, we're up for reelection, but we have a lot of competition.
Mr. Arce, are you ready to...
Where is the max capacity for this room? Where is the max capacity for this room? Where is the max capacity for this room?
We need to... As I said earlier, if the Board cannot conduct their business, unfortunately, they will close the meeting. Please let us continue. We have...
Do it simply, answer.
Please let us continue. This cannot be an open forum. So I am always happy to answer your questions, but not during the business portion of the Board meeting. Would you like to move on, Mrs. Broach? Or are we closing?
Move on. Announce the item and that you have public comments again.
Mr. Arce, are you ready to announce our admin?
Good evening, President Broach and members of the Board. I am delighted to present to you some new members of our administrative team. We went through an extensive recruitment process with all of these positions and we're excited about the candidates that we bring forward as recommendations to the Board today. Unfortunately, we had a couple who couldn't make it tonight and will hopefully be introduced at a next Board meeting. I'd like to start off with our recommendation for payroll supervisor. This is a new member to our management team, Ms. Allison Bruce. Ms. Bruce has worked for TVUSD for the last seven years in the fiscal payroll department as a payroll specialist. She grew up in Santa Maria, California, that tried to barbecue capital of the United States. She attended college at San Diego State University and University of Phoenix. She received her BA in English from San Diego and an MA in elementary education and teaching credential from the University of Phoenix. She's been married to her husband Russ for 19 years, and they hope to travel somewhere exciting for their 20th anniversary next year. She has two children. Ashton is 17 and will be a senior at Chaparral High School this fall. Paige is 15 and will be a sophomore at Chaparral High School this fall. Her favorite hobby is yoga. She loves to be active and yoga is great exercise and keeps her balanced. It's a great way to deal with the stress of the day. I give you Allison Bruce.
Hello, I'm Allison Bruce. I've been with TVUSD in the payroll department for the last seven years, and I'm excited to be presented to you for the position of payroll supervisor. I love this community, my children attend school within TVUSD, and I'm happy to be a part of it. I look forward to growing with the district and I feel like my background as a payroll specialist will give me the knowledge that I need for the payroll supervisor position. Thank you.
Next, Board members. Our recommendation for the position of elementary school assistant principal, one of our resource specialists, Ms. Sarah Gibbs. Ms. Gibbs is in her ninth year in education. She's been in the district for all nine years, teaching elementary, general education, and special education. She grew up in Temecula and she is a product of TVUSD. She actually attended Paloma Elementary, Temecula Middle, and Great Oak High School. She attended Northern Arizona University, where she received a bachelor's degree in elementary and special education. She earned her master's in education teaching from California Baptist University and her administrative leadership credential from National University. She's recently married to her husband Connor, who's a firefighter for the city of Riverside. So her name will soon be Sarah Fraser.
Yes.
She also bought a house in French Valley, and they're excited to move in and begin some renovations. In her free time, Sarah enjoys relaxing with the family, traveling, and reading. I give you Sarah Gibbs.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Governing Board members, Assistant Superintendent and Superintendent McCray. I am so honored to have this opportunity to introduce myself as Sarah Gibbs, going to be Sarah Fraser, as assistant principal here in Temecula Valley Unified School District. Like Mr. Arce said, I grew up in Temecula, so I'm honored to continue to give back to my community and the district that I grew up in, and thank you all for this opportunity.
That's all you expect to the new hires. I think that we're all here for the children as they are as well. Can we speed this process along because we're giving more time?
Board members, next, our recommendation for the position of assistant director in student welfare and success, Ms. Kelly Gradstein. Ms. Gradstein has been in education as a teacher for 10 years, elementary, general, and special education, and she started her teaching career with Teach for America in Atlanta, Georgia. She then taught in Detroit, Michigan, before having her first son and returning home to work for TVUSD. She's been a principal for eight years, Paloma Elementary School and Barnett Elementary School. She grew up right here in Temecula. She started in TVUSD at Rancho Elementary when she was in fifth grade before moving on to Temecula Middle School, then Margarita Middle School when it opened, and Temecula Valley High School. She completed her undergraduate degree and earned her teaching credential from the University of the Pacific. She completed a master's degree in educational leadership at Wayne State University and completed a second master's degree in special education at Brandman. She's been married for 19 years with two sons. Sons are 16 and 13. Jackson is going to be a junior at TVHS this year, and Maddox will be in eighth grade at Delvista Middle School. Her hobbies include she loves new recipes, she loves to cook, bake, and spend time with the family. I give you Kelly Gradstein.
Good evening, Executive Cabinet, Governing Board, and TVUSD community. I just want to say thank you so very much for this opportunity. When our family moved here in fifth grade, I never imagined that we would come back and I would have my own two sons attending the very same school that I graduated from. Sorry, everybody, go Bears. But it is a tremendous honor to be here today. I thank you for your support. I thank my family for their support, even though they are not here with me today. I am very excited for this opportunity and thank you.
Members of the Board coming to us from outside the district, our recommendation for the position of elementary school principal, Mr. Dustin Hackney. Mr. Hackney has been in education for a total of 13 years, seven years as a secondary teacher, three years as an assistant principal, and three years as an elementary principal. He grew up in Beaumont, California, which is where he started his teaching career. He attended the University of California, Santa Barbara, where he got a BA in economics and math. He got a credential and master's in cross-cultural teaching from National University. He's been married for 10 years to his wife Megan. She grew up in Temecula and went through Temecula schools, and they have two children. Harrison is seven and Stella is five. Both will be attending Temecula Valley schools this fall. His favorite hobbies are spending time with his kids, helping coach their various sports teams, and golfing. I give you Mr. Dustin Hackney.
Good evening, Superintendent, Governing Board, and Assistant Superintendents. I just want to thank you coming from outside the district, work professionally, but being a member of this community, how excited I am to be a part of now Temecula Valley Unified School District. I'm excited to lead a school, lead a group of students and the staff as we help our students grow and move on to the next generation. So I thank you guys so much for the opportunity and thank you very much.
And finally, members of the Board, members of the community, we have one of our SDC teachers from Beau Elementary School for the position of elementary intervention administrator. I'd like to introduce Ms. Taylor London. This will be her eighth year in education. She grew up in a small mountain community of Tehachapi, California. She received her master's degree from Fresno Pacific University and a bachelor's degree from California State University, Bakersfield. She has a master's degree in administrative services and a bachelor's degree in liberal studies. She holds a credential in administrative services, a mild-to-moderate special education credential, and a multiple-subject certificate. She's been married for five years. She has four children, two stepsons are Colton, 15, and Jace, 13, and her children are Jackson for...
Kaya.
Kaya, seven months. They love to travel and camp in their fifth wheel anytime they can. I give you Taylor London.
I'd like to thank the Superintendent, Assistant Superintendents, and the Governing Board to be here today. I'd also like to thank my husband for his constant support and my children. This has been a goal that I've been working towards since the start of my education career. Working for TVUSD as a teacher and now an administrator has been an incredible experience, and I feel lucky to be a part of this district. It really is a home away from home and a place that I'm glad to call home. I'm really looking forward to making a positive impact on the lives of students, teachers, and everyone in this community. I just want to thank you and let you know that I'm going to make you proud and appreciate your support.
Members of the Board and members of our community, that concludes our introduction of the new members to the administrative team. Let's give them one last round of applause. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Arce. We're moving into our information reports. Start with public comments on our first item, which is reopening schools. Stephanie Dawson.
You can't hear that outside. If you could enunciate so they could hear it, that would help.
There's more.
There's more.
There's a bunch of them here.
So we're going to let more people in.
Yeah, we're just leaving. We need to let them in.
Can we remove the reserved seating signs now? That's the only...
I will be following up with the fire marshal to figure out what the max capacity this room is.
The SRDs are letting people in as people come out. I'm sure that Stephanie Dawson would like to start with her public comment if you guys can give her the floor.
Let me go ahead?
Yes. Mr. Skumowitz will give you your 30 seconds.
Okay. I'm glad to be here to speak on this matter today. I think it's safe to say that the mask issue has become quite political, but I ask that in this moment, in this room, we remove the politics and think about what's best for our children. Let us rewind for a minute and think back to March, April of last year. March, April of last year, COVID was a completely uncharted territory for us all, for children, parents, school districts, the government. When they told us we needed to shut down for two weeks to flatten the curve, we listened. When they told us not to come around people outside our households, stay home, isolate our children, and lock them down, we listened. When they...
When they told us that in order to protect others from asymptomatic spread, we had to cover our faces and that of our children as young as two years old, we listened. Surge after surge with a flow of inconsistent information from all lever, levels. For over 12 months, we altered our everyday existence and that of our children. Our children taking a huge hit with canceled events, canceled milestones, losses in emotional development and losses of intellectual development. Ladies and gentlemen, it has been over a year and we have well over 12 months of data, COVID experience and moved goalposts. Our children deserve their lives back. They deserve their normal back. So please consider this. It has been proven that for children, masking them can cause more harm than good. It has been proven that children are least likely to suffer from COVID. It has been proven that many of us parents are willing to pull our children from the district and take their education into our own hands. So I ask of you today to forget the politics, forget Sacramento, forget the unions and do what's best for our children by making masks a choice and not a rule. And please know, defying Sacramento and other entities that claim authority over our children is an option. You have our parent backing to make the right choice for our kids so we can see their beautiful smiles and so they can breathe fresh air once again. Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen Brand. Karen Brand. Karen heard it. Mr. Schimmel, we'll give you your 30 seconds.
Okay. Hi, my name is Karen. I know that invalidates everything we say, right? If this meeting goes anything like other school boards in our state, there will be responses about how hands are tied. There will be blame shifting and instructions on how hope should be given to the same systems oppressing us. The AAP just released new guidelines that say anyone over two should be wearing masks. It doesn't matter which institution it is, Cal OSHA, et cetera, it'll be weaponized. But there's one institute that cannot be. It's called We the People. Board members. Board members, we are not like the trapped and scared domestic violence victims anymore. We know gaslighting when we see it. We're saying there are no more excuses. Back when the majority party was voiding out my daughter's perfectly valid medical exemption, I asked our now senator, what's the point of fighting? We're always on the defense. Melinda said, well, if we don't fight, we lose faster. I love our senator, I do, but she's only right if we keep complying. We have more hope than just losing slowly, but the burden for that falls on the parents here. So I'm turning my attention away from you guys to the parents now. Losing slowly is our fate unless civil disobedience is our response to tyranny. It's time to teach your kids. It's time to teach your kids about civil disobedience. And it's time for you to engage in it too. The school board is not going to be able to change anything until you do. Either do whatever it takes to pull your kids out of this mess or teach them to refuse to comply. And as it applies to masks, know that the law is on your side. According to California Education Code, section 48900, the school cannot send your kids home for not wearing masks. If, if you're afraid for your kids to have to participate in that kind of behavior, that civil disobedience behavior, you want them to learn how to respect adults, I get it, then pull them out. I'll help you, find me, I'll help you. I get it. I was a single mom, I understand it's hard to live in California on one income. You can do it, I'll help you. If you've, if you're saying that your only choice, your only option is to put them in school with masks on, that is not an option, that's called slavery. So do not comply with slavery. That's it.
Elizabeth Reed. Elizabeth Reed. Elizabeth, Mr. Schimmel, we'll give you your 30 seconds.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Reed and I'm here to give a student's perspective and thoughts on going back to in-person school in August. The dialogue of the whole pandemic has become muddled over the past year. It started with a mantra, flatten the curve. The goal was to reduce cases in order to give hospitals time to adjust for the large amount of people now requiring care. However, the wording changed. People went from trying to reduce the massive case numbers to trying to prevent themselves from ever getting the virus. This is unrealistic. This propaganda is making people believe that they will never get the virus if they wear a mask and follow all the guidelines, which is ridiculous. Recently, there has been discussion among the TVUSD district leaders of requiring all students returning to in-person school in August to wear a mask. I strongly disagree with this. The Riverside Department of Health only recommended that we continue to wear masks. It was never a mandate. I believe that every student should be able to choose whether to wear a mask or not. This is my body and I should have the right to make my own choices regarding it. If I want to donate one of my kidneys or donate blood, I can make that choice. If I want to pierce my ears or dye my hair purple, I can also make that choice. I, for one, am really excited and looking forward to returning to school with the ability to choose for myself if I wear a mask or not. Students should also get the chance to be responsible and make that choice for themselves. If anybody here took their family on vacation during the summer, did you wear a mask? Did you have your children wear masks at the beach, in a restaurant, while visiting friends or family? It would be ludicrous to require us to continue wearing masks when a majority of TVUSD students have already been to multiple places around other people without a mask on. This pandemic can be classified as an exponential decay trend, meaning that over time, COVID cases decrease at exponential rates. Think about it like this. If COVID was a pie, say the first day you cut the pie in half and remove that half. The next day you cut that remaining half in half and only leave a quarter of the pie. And the day after that, you do the same, only leaving an eighth of this COVID pie. That is how the pandemic works as, as it decreases exponentially. Mathematics clearly state that in an exponential decay graph, the Y value, which is the amount of COVID cases, will never, ever reach zero. Even as X, or time in this case, moves off into infinity, Y will always be greater than zero, even if just by decimal. So if you are waiting around for this endemic to go away, it is clear and proven by math that you will be waiting around for an infinite amount of time.
Good evening. Looks like we all are here with really the same message. So, you know, I had a big spill, but realistically, I just want you guys to follow this data, follow the science, just like every parent here does. You guys are our educators. If you guys are not able to research and find that, you have the ability to not follow the state mandate. The state mandate says we should follow a bunch of shoulds and recommends. There's no shalls or required. Therefore, they are not required to wear their mask. You have the option to not be lazy. You have the option to go to the Riverside County Health Department and develop your own plan to prevent our kids from being exposed to potential carbon dioxide, to gum disease. There's a million scientific data points behind why our kids should not be in masks and there is nothing but recommendations of why they should. So follow the science. Do your research. Go to Riverside County Health Department. You can develop your own plan that will allow our students back into schools without masks and without the hazard that they pose. So if you guys need help, Tyler Dawson, by the way, call me. I do this for a living. My job is to research COVID. My job is to research safe mitigations into a set, to assess or assist the epidemiologists. The state has it wrong. CDC's recommendations are not required to be followed and therefore we need to come up with our own plan. Do it for our kids. Thank you.
Laura Kingman.
I have something that I'd like to pass out. Can I ask someone maybe to do that for me, to the board members?
You can hand it to the officer and the officer will hand it out.
Good evening, board members. Something we haven't talked about tonight is the constitution. Something that we have in our back pocket is the law. I've drafted a resolution for you. Something that you can take as an actionable item from here on out. We, the parents, have been called to action. We are no longer sitting passively by allowing our elected officials to determine policy for our children without our input. The time is here to take an active role in our children's education at all levels and we're not going away at all. We want to accomplish a shared goal, which I hope you all do, of returning local control back to our school districts, which you say you don't have. So you can do your job to act in the best interest of the community here that elected and hired you. Any school district which signs on to these new restrictions is likely to face legal action, similar to the legal action right now facing the California Department of Public Health, as these mandates are clearly unconstitutional. Since the CDPH is leaving the enforcement of the mask mandate up to each district, and they do leave it up to each district, we are calling you to action immediately to commit to our schools and giving our children every opportunity to return to normalcy in the classroom. The resolution you have, I also just emailed it to you along with 40 other board members in neighboring school districts here in the valley, all the way up to Corona Norco. They all have this same resolution. We are not messing around. We ask that you approve this resolution to advocate for parental choice for masking and vaccinating our children as well as ensure the mask requirements will not be used as punishment to coerce children to get vaccinated. Our children deserve a school year free from unscientific and punitive restrictions. As educational leaders in our community, it is your duty to provide that to them, the children. They desperately need your support. Thank you.
Courtney Toledo.
I'd be happy to email it out to everybody, see what you have to say.
Courtney, Mr. Schimmel, we'll give you your 30 seconds.
I'm here on behalf of my school-aged children. I have a kindergartner and a second grader that will be starting school in the fall. I'm here to advocate for choice, specifically masked, masked choice. But I'm also asking you to make a choice, to stop hiding behind the mandates, to stand up for our kids and make your voices heard along with us. I am tired of the silence, the secrets. I am tired of not knowing what you're thinking. I'm going off script here, sorry. I'm asking you to contact the CDPH and ask them to give you the jurisdiction in our district to make the choice on masks. We need to take back the choice for the parents. I have a son, I've held him back. He's five, he's going to be six, he's going into kindergarten. I wanted him to be ready. I wanted him to be emotionally and developmentally ready for kindergarten. Now he gets to go with a mask. How is he going to learn to read? He can't see his teacher's face. I've started, how is he gonna learn to read? How is he going to learn how to interact with his peers if he can't see their face? How is he going to be a member of the community with his, his development is, is being hindered? Again, going off script. My daughter survived distance learning. She did well, her grades were great. She hates school now. She hated school. How is she going to get back in the classroom and reignite that passion with a mask on her face? Something to worry about, something to take off, something to put on, something to get in trouble for. How is she going to do that? I understand your hands are tied. Untie them. Help us. Speak up for our kids. We are tired of waiting. Mr. Schwartz, I have a question for you that I know you can't answer. You said that you can't exempt the kids, you have to deal with the kids that don't show up with masks. How are you going to deal with our kids? What kind of verbiage is that? That's in an email that I have. You're looking to deal with our kids? How about educate, protect, help them develop, not just deal with them? That's not your job. That's not the teacher's job. They shouldn't have to, to monitor mask usage. That's not their job. I have more time. People are going to say, I have a choice to pull my kids. That's not a choice. They need school, they need community, they need to know that the world is bigger than just our home. I've taught preschool in our home for seven years to prepare them. They are ready to go into the world. It is not a choice to tell me to just keep them home. I have to work. They deserve an education in person with their friends. I can't afford private school. I can't sell a car, I can't sell a kidney, I, I can't do those things. But they still deserve to be in school with their peers. And to say that that's a choice, it's not a choice. It's not equal, it's not fair, they're not getting the same education as the kids in school if I pull them out because I don't want them to wear a mask. Thank you.
Cheryl Williams.
Good evening. I just want to quickly discuss just a couple of the dangers of masks in children. Masks adversely affect respiratory physiology and function. Masks lower oxygen levels in the blood. Medical masks raise carbon dioxide levels in the blood. They trap exhaled viral and other pathogens in the mouth inner space, increase viral infections, leading to an increase in the severity of disease if you become in contact with it. Cloth masks may increase the risk, the risk of contracting COVID and other respiratory infections. They also give you a false sense of security. Oh, I'm wearing a mask, so now I don't have to socially distance. Now I don't have to use my hand sanitizer. Gives you a false sense of security. Also, untrained and inappropriate management of face masks. Children do not know how to put on a face mask correctly and wear it all day and not touch their face. So they're contaminating other surfaces, then putting it back on their mask. This leads to all kinds of adverse reactions, including bacteria and viruses and mold that can colonize in their masks. A recent study of children wearing masks for a six to eight hour period of time found 82 bacterial colonies and four mold colonies in their masks. This is far more dangerous for the lung infections that it can, it create is far more dangerous than COVID-19 itself. We have, we have bacterial pneumonia is exploding all over the country in children. Masks prevent the development of herd immunity, which is the only way to prevent and end a pandemic. Children with asthma, autism and other neural developmental disorders are being discriminated against and harmed by mask mandates and lockdowns. And another thing that a lot of people aren't talking about is the emotional, mental, psychological effects of mask mandates and lockdowns on our children. Depression, anxiety, attempted suicide has skyrocketed in the last year in teens and young kids. Kids as young as 10 years old are committing suicide. Excuse me. My kids, last year when they did go back to school for a month, their, their kids, their friends would not talk to them. They were afraid to go near them because they thought that they were going to give them COVID. The teen suicide rate in California, just in the year 2020, rose 24%, leading to 134 deaths compared to 23 deaths of COVID. The suicide rate in young girls rose 50%. This is terrifying to me, I have three daughters. All this for a disease that is 99.7 survivable in kids under 18.
Thank you.
Insane.
Katina Haverlock. Katina.
I'd like to start by saying what I don't want to hear. And I don't want to hear that you don't have power to make changes. That was your opening statement. Your opening statement was that you don't have power, that OSHA is making you do it, that the California Health District is making you do that and that is bull. You do have power. You were elected to represent this. This is why you're here. You're here for us as parents and you're here for our children. And so I don't want to be told that, take it up to San Francisco, take it to, I want you to take it to San Francisco and this is what I want you to tell them. This is according to the Centers for Disease Control. Since the beginning of this pandemic, 385 children under the age of 18 have passed away and that is tragic. away, and that is tragic. Of those 385 children, all had a pre-existing medical condition, a serious one like leukemia. When you look at kids without pre-existing conditions, it's next to zero deaths. That is your fact. Let's look at facts and not fear. Now conversely, in the 2019-2020 school year, 434 children died from influenza, and we weren't masking them up then. So I want you to look at the facts, and I want you to look at the science, and I want you to remember why you are sitting there. You are not sitting there for power, you are sitting there for our children, you are sitting there for us, and I want you to get out of these seats and get up to Sacramento and make the voices of your constituents heard. That's your job. Thank you.
Austin Myers? Austin Myers?
I appreciate you guys taking all the abuse. My first board meeting, I'm not familiar with you guys, you guys aren't familiar with me, but I have a feeling we'll get familiar with each other. I appreciate all the virtue signaling with your masks. I have a mask too in my pocket. The box I took this mask out of said that it does not protect you against viruses. Okay? I did a little number crunching, okay? So in 2017 to 2018 flu season, did we shut down schools? Did we wear masks? Okay, let's fast forward to 2020. Did we shut down schools? Did we wear masks? Yes. Okay, well, why did we do it? Well, in 2020, we had COVID-19, as everybody knows. I checked the CDC website, and I looked up the number of deaths of school-aged children, which is five to 17 years. And in all of the United States, there was 126 deaths between March 1st of 2020 to December 12th of 2020. Of those, 47% had very, like we heard about leukemia, different comorbidities that contributed to their death, probably greater than that. Amazingly, at the same time, there was no influenza deaths. So let's go back to 2017. Why did I bring that up? Well, in 2017, there was an estimate on the CDC website of that flu season that there was a total of 528 deaths. That's 330% greater chance of your child dying of influenza in 2017 and 2018 than from COVID, and yet we're all masks. So I wanna know, what are you guys doing to push back on Sacramento like we've heard? Are you writing letters? Are you calling? I'm a businessman. If I wanna get something done and someone's not acting, sometimes you have to push a little harder. Sometimes you have to call frequently. Push back a little bit. And basically, too, I wanted to go to the agenda point that someone brought up in the first public session about epic education and CRT. Why are we allowing this in our schools? It's a vile communist Marxist agenda. I know, I went to college. I endured Marxist professors, okay? And I just wanna say, it's not acceptable in our schools, and I really hope you guys can light on and veto the $3,500 to epic education. Please do.
Just so everyone knows, at 6:19, Stephen Schwartz emailed me back stating that my opinion should be addressed to the California Secretary of Health and Human Services. Thank you, Stephen Schwartz, for passing the buck.
We have a speaker, let's give her the respect to speak.
I like what they're saying. I'm here to advocate for my son, who is on an IEP. And I will let you know, TVUSD has failed him miserably. Nothing of these past 15 months has helped my student at all. Where you have, in my IEP, in his IEP, stated the least restricted environment, young kids are not affected by this disease. We have heard the numbers, we've heard all that. The numbers, if any, are low, minuscule, but the negative impact of masks on their academic and social progress is high. My son, I asked him, I said, "I'm going tonight, I don't know if I'm gonna speak or not, what would you say?" He says, "Mom, I can't focus when I wear that thing. I can't breathe, I can't do what I need to do." So someone who has ADD, who already has learning disabilities, has this other restrictive environment on his face that prevents him from getting the instructions he needs. That is not okay with me. Individuals with Disability Education Act is a special education law that mandates regulation for students with disabilities to protect their rights as students and the rights as parents. That's why I'm here. This is my very first time ever doing anything like this, but forcing masks on students is developmentally inappropriate. It impedes instructions and restricts valuable peer-to-peer learning. Students cannot tolerate wearing a mask due to physical limitations, sensory intolerances, and behavioral concerns. It completely interferes with their right to a free and appropriate public education. And I fully 100 believe that. Kids need to be kids, we need to get back to normalcy. We all grew up where schools were germs. We... I was a kindergarten teacher. I was always sick. It's okay, I built up my immunity, I got over it. We will get over this, this is not... I've had two of my three sons have COVID. They were sick for a day and a half. We've had worse colds than that. So having these masks, I believe teachers will be taking valuable teaching instruction time to have to enforce these things because everybody's... What kid is gonna keep it on, not lick holes in it like my son does? Pull it, and then all the germs are on their hands, going to their desks, going everywhere. These masks are anything. And as it was brought up, I decided to bring from my husband's medical facility a box, hospital-grade, and the number one warning on here states, "This mask is not to be used for antimicrobial protection, for antiviral protection, or particulate filtration, and it does not eliminate or reduce the risk of contracting any disease or infection." So...
Thank you.
This mask is about as useless as the people I see driving in their car alone with their mask on.
Three minutes is up, three minutes is up, thank you.
Time's up?
Time's up, thank you.
But I also, as a past kindergarten teacher, smiles. It's the most important...
President Groch, we have reached 30 minutes on this agendized... Comments on this agendized topic.
We have... We cannot have a discussion on extending the... We can't have the discussion to vote to extend time if we cannot have order in this room. I have 10 public comments left. I need a motion to extend the 30 minutes.
I move that we extend the public comment time to accommodate the remaining 10 comments that have been submitted.
And can I have a second?
Second. Hi, second.
Second, to Mr. Schumacher, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Mr. Loner? Motion passes 5-0. We'll continue with the next 10 comments after the last of the comments. We are gonna take a short break before we move into the information report. David Ellis and Caleb.
So hold that Mary flag up high. So my name's David, and this is my son Caleb, he's seven years old. 99.98% survival rate of children between the ages of zero and 17 years old. Please take a moment and actually let that sink in. Where's the true science? And I'm not talking about the fear-mongering talking points that we hear every single day, spewed by the mainstream media, every minute, to the kids on Nickelodeon, along with the critical race theory. Don't say anything yet. For the past two years, our children have suffered more than COVID, just from the restrictions that have been put in place. Children these days, they spend so much time on devices and censored social media. And I repeat, censored social media. Anybody wants to argue with me? It's obvious, come on. Our children, they lack basic communication skills, and now we're gonna take away their ability to actually communicate effectively by putting masks on them? They can't smile, they can't do anything? My son, this is what he does, he smiles. He's outgoing. I mean, let's be real here, 100% of this is politically motivated. Our children, they play together nonstop outside of school, but somehow, wearing a mask at school makes them safer. I repeat, 99.98% survival rate. Our society is all about instilling fear in our children. This isn't about safety. Why is my child scared all the time because he sees stuff on TV? My child didn't look at people and races or anything like that until like the last few years. And let's be obvious, let's be real of what the real reason is. So do you care about... Excuse me, Mr. Schwartz, we don't need email, okay? Do you care about the country, I mean, about their anxiety and their depression? Do you care about the low levels of oxygen in the bloodstream that's leading to major respiratory issues? I hope my son's gonna get a few minutes. Do you care about the suicide rate and the increase from this additional anxiety? So let me just tell you a quick little story, two seconds, it'll be a quick story. I saw a little girl, 10 years old, walking down the street, wearing a mask, glued to her cellphone. Nobody... You know what? The mask wasn't the problem. It was the problem was, she wasn't aware of her surroundings. Somebody could've come by and abducted her, taken her, putting her in a car and taking her away. This is the United States of America, and our freedoms are being taken away from us, and we won't stand for it. And now I'm gonna give some time to my son, to seven-years-old Caleb Ellis.
Go ahead, Caleb.
I seen a mask with plexiglass in front of me. I have no energy. They let us breathe for three seconds outside, then I have to go back and learn again. I can't see their facial expressions, I don't understand them, I can't hear them, I can't talk to them, I can't do anything with them. It's terrible. I feel like I might quit the school if they're gonna do this the whole time. I don't know why they're doing this. It's not necessary, the masks don't do anything. All they are are things that are face-hugging monsters that pretty much do nothing. Nothing. I want my freedom.
Thank you. That's seven years old.
Next, we have Joy. There wasn't a last name. First name, Joy.
We're back. I was at the last meeting, there was 10 of us moms, and we came back with our people, so... Way to go, Temecula, that's all I have to say, way to go, Temecula. Good evening, yes, there's an army of us, and we're not stopping after tonight, just so you know. We have many things to tackle, like CRT, masks is first on the list here. Good evening, Madam President and members of the board. I would first like to thank Mr. Loner on the screen. Mr. Loner, thank you for fighting for us. Thank you. That is why we voted for you. Thank you so much for fighting for us. I love your stand for our freedoms, for doing exactly what we elected you for. It's so disappointing to see that you're alone in this. I know that you got up and spoke, and the rest of your board members shut you down. We know that the rest of the board believes this matter of requiring masks is out of their hands, that they're supposedly powerless. However, the answer, that answer will not work for us. We need you to fight for our kids' right to choose. Please band together with other school boards and put the pressure on the CDPH. You have this whole town behind you. We will have your backs. Or if you have to require the masks, do not enforce any type of punishment if the kids aren't wearing them. Find a loophole, find one. Request mask choice, please do something. We ask that you don't just blindly follow these arbitrary mandates that have zero basis in science or data. Respectfully, if you can't solve, help with, or even fight for our biggest concern for our kids at this time, then what are you here for? What are you here for? This is our biggest concern, our biggest concern. And I worked on campaigns locally for public office people, and all the people that get behind you, I know what it takes for you to sit where you're sitting, all the people behind you, all the money it took to get you to that seat, and you can't support the biggest concern of your valley? Like, I don't understand. It's ridiculous. Basically, I'll finish with this. I've been out and about in this valley every day with my kids, at gyms, public pools, grocery stores, the mall, church, four VBSs, parks, birthday parties, the list goes on. And literally, we never see children in masks in this town. Maybe one kid out of 100. You cannot tell me that this valley wants their kids in masks, Steve. We are the citizens of a free country. This is the United States of America. And lastly, my body, my choice. How does it work for them, but not us? Thank you.
Lenny Paris?
Okay, got nothing written down, so I'm just gonna speak my mind. First and foremost, our great Governor, Supreme Leader Newsom, just about two hours ago, decided to put a statement out and said, "If we are all vaccinated, the kids don't need to wear a mask." If we're not vaccinated, so to me, that's... The point of my thing here is narrative tonight. Everything here is a narrative. Masks are narrative, vaccines are narrative, CRT narrative, everything's a narrative. I am a business owner in town here, I have some of my clients in this room. I'm also a coach, I'm a football coach for 10 years. When I see my junior, my son, who's a junior in high school, last year, when he was a sophomore, he was given the opportunity to go back to school for that last month and a half. And under the guidelines that you're basically saying tonight, what did he tell me? Dad, I'm not going to school. I'm not going to school if I have to wear a mask. That tells me everything, I'm not sure about everybody, I don't know what the numbers were as far as, you know, how many kids end up going to school for the last month and a half. But bottom line is choice. You guys have the authority. There's districts out there who are basically doing what we all want. It's all over the place, okay? So you have the choice, you have the authority, just listen to what we have to say. It's pretty simple. It's pretty simple, because there is a sign out there right now, and I didn't wanna get angry with anybody, but there's a sign out there to run for office, to run for board. I was one of the first ones to put my name out there, and this is not a threat, but this is a promise. We are coming for you if we do not get our way. Bottom line. This is Temecula. This is Temecula Valley. This is not Los Angeles. This is not San Francisco. This is not Sacramento. This is Riverside County. We have a sheriff who will sit right next to me and back everything that I say. Everything that I say. Thank you.
Christina Paris?
I want to say something. Have you seen Daddy's Liberty? We should be free not wearing something over our face. Children's face. Wearing something over their nose and mouth. Do you ever see a kid wearing that? Not back in the day, but now, seriously, it's just bad.
He can take the rest of my time.
Hello. My name is Christina Paris. I'm here to represent my family and our kids. I currently have a son in high school here in Temecula who will be a junior. My kids went through Tony Tobin, VALE, TV. They've attended Trinity Lutheran, bases before and after care, kinder care, and all the town camps. The reason why that's necessary to know is that in all that time, my kids attended your district, they have brought home and were exposed to coxsackie, fevers, chicken pox, lice rash, colds, and flus. I work full-time, and they've brought everything home. They have never worn a mask. We moved from New Jersey. They had very incremental vaccines. We didn't go for any of the other ones. Like all parents, coaches, teachers, and students here, the reason for my talking today is selfish. We are now moving into the third disruptive academic school year, and these kids are not making any progress. You, along with all those in power in the state of California, are denying them their deserved academics as citizens. You're blocking their go-forward decisions that are affecting college and their future and the use of penalties of masks. Why is the penalty about masks? My son hasn't had a lab science in two years. These kids are not prepared for standardized testing that you're requiring. And our parents immigrated to this country for their grandchildren and their children. They have a better education than our kids do years later. While 1,000 educators ran to the borders to teach, leaving the rest of our kids, to your mercy, to be punished, wearing masks and staying in lockdowns. Masks are not required in our home. Along with my husband, I are not enforcing your ruling for masks. The latest state guidance on masks revised on July 13th stating that masks are optional outdoors for school settings, but are required indoors is at your power. They move the power down to the district. And how are we enforcing mask rules? That is not acceptable. This should be a choice. What do you mean by enforcing? What are you going to do? What does that mean? Is that a threat? Our governor is now mandating vaccines. As of two hours, he just posted that the only way masks could come off is if it's a vaccine. We've... I mean, we've written to Sacramento, and their response was not acceptable to the real health and safety of our children. The masks are pointless. They do more harm. There is long-term use of face masks posted. There's articles by The Perk that show this. If you want to take as much credit for implementing masks and pushing this agenda, then I hope you're going to be willing to take all the blame for any suicides and all the emotional toll this is taking on our kids. We urge you to fight for our community and mask choice.
Time's up. Thank you.
Von Palmer?
I have something to say. We... That is... Never... Ever my dad...
But he has an IED, also a, and still got mask hindered to the ability to teach.
My kid as well.
Yeah, my kid. He's trying very hard.
Von, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Von Palmer. I came to speak today because I don't like how our school is working these days. First of all, why do we need masks if you don't need to wear a mask in the store? Me and my sister do karate. Don't have to wear a mask there. That is my first question. Also, my little sister, she went into quarantine a few days before her birthday. It was when she was in kindergarten. I feel so bad for her because she had to almost start school like this. I think that all of this is terrible and ridiculous. Thank you.
Ian Palmer?
All right. So I just was reading on your guys' own website that all attendees here must have masks on. Says it right in there. But I look around, and no one has a mask on. So are we enforcing those rules? I know you can't answer my question, but the point is, there's hypocrisy here. There's law enforcement officials walking around with no masks on that work for the county in here, in this room. I mean, you guys all look ridiculous up there with your masks on. So. But seriously, it sounds like, maybe, who knows? I don't know what you're all thinking. Maybe you're back there, and you wish you didn't have to wear masks and all that stuff, too. But you seem to lack the courage to, you're standing behind this mandates or rules and saying, we can't do anything about it. Yet July 15th, a couple of days ago, school officials are flouting updated state rules, saying students will be allowed to return to classroom with or without a mask. This is in California. It says these districts weren't class all year. They just don't believe masks are needed to teach children, said Tim Taylor, the Executive Director of Small School Districts Association. Anyway, you can read the article, but they're not going to wear masks. They told Sacramento, we're not doing it. So you guys, if you need inspiration, it's right there. Be inspired. Do the same thing. Quit standing behind these mandates. This can't be fun for you people, right? You're going to have a meeting, this is my first one, but you guys are going to have a group like this every month, staying late, and you have to get told how much we hate the mask. I'm sure you guys don't want to have to do this every month, right? So come on, work for what all these people want is the same thing. It's probably the same thing you guys want. So just do your jobs and do it.
Next, we have Ava.
Good evening. My name's Ava, and I'm fourteen. My family chose to homeschool two years ago, and I'm so glad we did. We didn't have to wear masks or sit behind pieces of plastic all day. Most of my friends are going to TV or Great Oak next year. It makes me feel so sad that knowing that my friends will have to cover their faces all day just to go to school. Masks make it so much harder to communicate, talk, and engage. How is a kid supposed to hear what the teacher's saying when their mouth is covered? And the science clearly demonstrates that face masks cause carbon dioxide, rebreathing, and hypercapnia. Child CO2 levels are much higher than adult CO2 levels. So when a child is breathing in their own CO2 for six or more hours a day, their CO2 level is going to increase much, much more than an adult's. And the carbon dioxide toxicity symptoms can cause dim sight, reduced hearing, shortness of breath, muscle tremors, increased heart rate, increased blood pressure, sweating, drowsiness, dizziness, confusion, headache, and unconsciousness. For the sake of my friends and everyone else in school, unmask the schools. Thank you.
Lethella?
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. I am here as a member of the community and a mother of two school-aged children, and I'm actually an alumni of the first graduating class at Chaparral High School. I am here, supported by countless parents from your school district, many of whom I do not know, and some that are also close friends, teachers, nurses, staff in your district. As elected officials, I'm asking you to reconsider your mandated indoor mask policy for all children, and I'm going to add staff, because teachers don't deserve to wear them either. The students cannot see their face. The nurses should not have to be wearing masks. Your staff should not have to wear masks. This needs to be with no restrictions, no vaccines, no plexiglass. You cannot be in the back of a Spanish classroom with plexiglass trying to learn a foreign language. This is absurd. I'm not going to get into the real science behind the masks because you know. You know the truth. We all do. These masks do more harm than good. They cover the faces of the children you're supposed to be protecting, which is how they communicate. Have you forgotten that? Is it okay? This is how they learn. This is how they read. They trap bacteria, increasing opportunities for illness. If this is really about health and safety, why are you encouraging a practice that has been proven to make people more ill? I have heard firsthand from teachers how the mental wellness of their students has been negatively impacted because of the mandated mask-wearing in their classrooms. These teachers are here, and they are afraid to speak out. They are afraid for retaliation from you. We have heard you sit on the dais and say, my hands are tied. We've been paying attention behind the scenes. Just recently, President Broach commented in an email, despite what some news sources are inaccurately reporting, whether or not masks are required for students is not, in all caps, a local decision. I find this interesting, as just last week, Alpine Unified, La Grande Union, Cold Spring Union School District in California, in our state, yes, they are small districts, but they are still school districts speaking up against this. They are making masks optional for students. And this is based on an announcement made by the California Department of Public Health, which you say is leading you. And I hope Superintendent McClay, that when you do your presentation for this item, that you note that, that it is in your jurisdiction. Parents are getting smarter, and we're paying attention to what's happening at the local school board level. And it doesn't just apply to masks. It also has to do with critical race theory, even if you don't want to call it that. That's okay. We're actually pretty smart, and we can figure things out. Sex education, even though you don't call it that, we know it's in everything, and we're watching what's going on. We know that in 2022, three of you are going to be up for reelection. We know that two of you will be up for reelection the following year in 2024. This is your opportunity to do what's right, to stand up and set the precedent for your neighboring districts. We ask you as elected representatives that are here to represent the people in front of you to do your job. Otherwise, when it's time to vote, we might have to say, sorry, our hands are tied.
I have one last public comment. It was the last one that was turned in, but there's no name on it.
Right here.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Madeline Santone. I'm going into fourth grade, and I have brothers going into fourth and second grade. Last year...
We're going to get you so it's closer.
Last year, when we wore masks in school, I felt like I couldn't breathe, and it was hard to hear my friends and my teacher. I couldn't focus. It was wet and annoying. My ears hurt, and it was very awful. I want you to let us choose if we want to wear a mask or not. I want to be able to choose if I want to wear a mask, and I don't want to get yelled at if I don't have one on. I'm not afraid of COVID or getting sick. I'm afraid of wearing masks all year. I'm afraid that the world will never return to normal. Please let schools go back to normal this year, and don't make the teachers yell at us if we don't wear a mask.
Hi, I'm Lila Howell. I believe that masks should not be required at schools. One, they make it hard to breathe. Two, they don't stop the spread of COVID-19. Three, we should have our own choice. In conclusion, wearing masks don't help. We shouldn't have to wear them if we don't want to.
Excuse me, did she have extra time? I just want to say one thing really quick.
I'm sorry we had to have this form filled out. I have to...
I was too nervous to do a form because I didn't think I was going to have the guts to say anything, but there's just one thing I need to say.
I'm so sorry. I cannot write the grant. The board will take a fifteen-minute break at this time.
This isn't about ego, Steve Schwartz. This isn't about...
We're taking a fifteen-minute break.
There's only six slides in this. Are we okay?
Get started. I know there's a lot of anticipation for this topic, so as we pull up screens, board, you can also see the screens within the room, if those are helpful. So this really should be a celebratory moment when we talk about reopening schools. We've been waiting for this opportunity to talk about full-time instruction and reopening for the past seventeen months. So what started, and we heard reference to that tonight, what started as what we thought was a three-week closure, has been an incredibly long and often very, very frustrating journey as our society as a whole has navigated the unknowns of this pandemic. So we are excited to be finally authorized to be reopening full-time. And so we're going to talk about that a little bit tonight and what that's going to look like. Enrollment at this moment is looking good. Our target this year is 26,200. As of today, we've reached 26,000. So that's actually above where we typically are the third week in July. So we are excited about that. I must say, before we talk about August 11th, which is our big day, we are really proud to be one of the few districts in our entire county to have offered part-time instruction learning since last March, as well as one of the first districts to open hubs, which you know we began last October for our most at-risk learners. And we're proud of the multiple programs that we've been running this summer for many of our students. I believe over 2,000 of our students have been participating either in-person or virtual, TK through 12, in our summer school programs. We refer to them as the roomies and the zoomies, you know, because some of them have been coming in person, and others have been participating online. So as you also know, governing board, we are launching our new TK through eight Home Instead Innovation Academy, that's kind of a mouthful, for those who opt to remain online. And as of today, we have enrolled nearly 350 students in that new program. And that program, as you know, is in addition to our existing secondary online program. So basically, come August 11th in, in TVUSD, we will be offering the full gamut of TK through 12 online learning for all of our families who want or need that option. So if you go to the next slide, Mrs. O'Connell. I don't have the clicker. Oh, I do have it. Sorry. Oh, there you go. All right. Thank you. I just wanted to remind everybody, I know lots of folks watching from home, as well as here in the audience, but most importantly, our governing board, that in TVUSD, our primary focus remains on ensuring high-quality teaching and learning. And that's regardless of the program that families choose to enroll in. So be it in-person or virtual, our mission is to support the teaching and the learning processes. So you've seen some of our teachers this evening, our support staff, our administrators. I truly believe we have the best. And I firmly believe that this mission to focus on high-quality teaching and learning is really what has set our district apart for the past two decades. Because we have a relentless, or the expression we like to use is dog-on-a-bone mentality when it comes to our focus on instruction. And we try really hard to keep distractions in the background so that our teachers, our principals, and our support staff can really focus on student learning. so that our teachers, our principals, and our support staff can really focus on student learning. And so that's been a critical theme throughout TVUSD's history that we want, we want to get back to. We want to get away from all of these extraneous things that really don't have much to do with teaching and learning at all. They are distractions. So here you see on the next slide, we want to talk just a little bit about, let's see if I can get it. No, this one isn't working, Mrs. O'Connell. Thank you so much. So full-time, in-person instruction. Basically, with high-quality teaching and learning in mind, what does that mean? Our 27 school sites, and now we're up to 33 programs. They will all open their doors on August 11th. Our return to in-person education will look very different than when it, what it looked like when we left in June, when social distancing and many other measures were required of us. In fact, it will look far more like what it looked like when we closed for the pandemic in March of 2020. And we really believe that's cause for celebration. So it's heartbreaking when we are forced to focus on items again that take us away from teaching and learning and really continue to divide our community. So what does that full-time instruction look like? What does school look like? We're basically talking all courses, full instruction, and resumed, normal, daily schedules will be up and running. So start of school to end of the school day with, and I hope that our students are excited to hear this part, recess, lunch, physical education, visual and performing arts, athletics. All of those things going on throughout the school day that look like school in March of 2020. And that includes students playing together, students chatting and talking, students eating together, mask-free, always outdoors. And we're working on, we're getting to the indoor piece, so hang with me for just a minute or two more. But like I said, physical education, visual and performing arts, athletics, co-curriculars, clubs, everything that we have in place in TVUSD that connects kids. Because we've always had as a priority that we connect kids to school. And for many kids, that's the extra activities. That might just be playing dodgeball at recess time. So we're really working hard to be sure that we have all those connections in place. And this is exciting. It should be exciting. It should be an exciting time. I got a taste of it when I was able to visit summer school just a few weeks ago, seeing the kids all over the campus, running around, learning in class, learning and playing outside of class, was really, really exciting and exhilarating. And so we really should be excited to start that and to see that again on August 11th. In regard to masks, now bear with me here, please, okay? We'll get to it. In regard to masks, they are being required at this point by the California Department of Public Health, otherwise known as CDPH. Please let me emphasize that. CDPH is mandating masks for students, vaccinated or not, in grades TK through 12 at all schools, public and private, in California. It's not a local decision. Again, hang with me, we're going to get there. Meaning that part is not a decision that our school board or our administrative staff is able to change. That doesn't mean that we aren't advocating for what we hear our community asking for. It doesn't mean that we haven't been advocating since day one. And it doesn't mean that we aren't very, very frustrated at the mixed messages. And we heard some of our, even students, talking about that tonight. The discrepancies between what's required of us in schools versus what we're allowed to do in public, at the mall, at the parks, the soccer games, et cetera, et cetera. So where are we? If I could finish. So where are we with the masks? I know we have some staff watching as well, so we just wanted to highlight this. And I appreciate those of you just being patient enough to let me get to the part I know you want to hear most desperately. Per OSHA right now, all employees must wear masks unless they're vaccinated. Per CDPH, all students in grades TK through 12, sorry, like I mentioned, have to wear the masks while indoors. But within hours of the original CDPH documents release, and I believe this is where the confusion is coming from, CDPH revised their language so that each school district can determine now how to enforce the mask-wearing of students. So each district has been asked to develop a plan that will be, of what will be done. Basically, how will that be enforced? To what degree will it be enforced? What will enforcement look like? Each district has been asked to develop that plan for when a student doesn't wear the mask. Now, while we don't have that plan yet of how it will be enforced, we are working on it. We're working daily with other districts. We're working almost hourly with legal counsel. And we're working with state lobbyists as well as our county health experts to develop what that's going to look like. In addition to that, coming out very, very soon, we have a survey coming out for all of our stakeholders. Again, remember, we have 26,000 students. That means 26,000 parents times two or more in some cases. So we want to be sure that we're hearing from all. So we have a survey coming out for our parents as well as our staff. I know we heard some people tonight advocating on behalf of our staff. Just like our parents, we have some staff who are very, very passionate about not wanting masks. We have some staff who are very, very passionate about the reverse. And so that survey will be coming out. I know that's not exactly what everybody wants to hear tonight, but it's authentic, it's real, it's transparent. It's where we are with what we know today. That doesn't mean that it won't change again tomorrow, or the next day, or even the next day. But with what we know today, that's where we are at. So we thank you again. It's been 17 months of that. Believe me, I know more than anyone else knows how frustrating that has been. It's been 17 months, and we need a little more time. So for those of you. Please let Dr. McClay finish her report. Would you like me to keep going? Yes? Yes. Okay, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you. So what you'll see, and I know that some folks in this room are not interested in this, but I have had a lot of contact this week from folks who have asked throughout the district and governing board, if you are interested on this next slide, Mrs. O'Connell. It just tells who to contact if you really are passionate, which I know. I would strongly suggest that we all continue to make our voices heard. This is critical, that we continue to make our voices heard, just like we are doing on our community's behalf. This will help. And so the last. I think you should push through so that. Pardon, I'm sorry? Let's get the information out, and then we can reassess. Yes, it will be posted, it's on the district website, and we continue to give it to anybody who asks for it. And then last, Mrs. O'Connell. Would you do one more? So again, despite the mask issue right now being such a hot topic, be it political or be it personal for all of us, we want to emphasize that come August 11th, our focus is on high-quality teaching and learning, be it in-person or virtual. We will. We will focus on that and leave the other items to the experts who deal with those areas. Thank you. Our next information report is board planning. This is the, this is the only last warning. If not, you'll have to be removed from the boardroom. We need to get through our business meeting. I know that there's a lot of passion here, I understand that, but we have to get through this meeting, and there's other things in here we have to do for the kids for the next year. Board planning calendar and governance calendar. Kate, do you want me to start, or you want to start? Go ahead, Mrs. Heaton, and I'll tag on. Okay.
So each year, this time, we reevaluate our board planning calendar. And in front of you, you have a couple of different documents. The first one is the board planning calendar. And when we were looking at this for this year, we did a look back really at two years because last year, our reports were basically modified because.